Okay, I am going to call to order the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Meeting, open meeting of Wednesday, October 18th, 2017. So, welcome, everybody. The first order of business is the recognition of National Merit Scholars.
That's right. It's October. This is an annual event for us. It's very exciting to begin the school year celebrating the success of our students. And as is tradition, this evening, we're going to be recognizing our National Merit Scholars. Just a little bit of context for that. About 1.6 million juniors and more than 22,000 high school students entered this competition. And they are eligible to participate by taking the 2016 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which is an initial screening of program entrants. So, the students that we're recognizing this evening certainly are representative of high academic achievement. And I know many of our students are joined by someone from a family or friend. So, we extend to you our appreciation for being so supportive of their experience in high school and also in public education. And this is something that we really celebrate and look forward to each and every year. There are a few people that we haven't recognized officially yet. And so, by way of continuing our recognition of students, I think it's appropriate to recognize our administrative team. As we look across the table, we see some new and interesting faces. And they will be participating in this event tonight as well. So, I would like to introduce our new principal, Dr. Sarah Pogluskiewicz.
Thank you.
And Sarah, you might want to introduce your team.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity. So, we have Michelle Antonato, who is our veteran AP, who continues on with us in T-Hawk Nation. We're very excited to have her. And then, we have Andy McGowan, additional AP. He comes from being a phys ed teacher and a health teacher here in Algonquin to continue the Algonquin ways, which is also very exciting. And we are joined by our newest Assistant Principal, which is Mr. Tim McDonald, who comes from us from our local community. And we're also equally excited to have him join our team. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be hearing more from this outstanding team shortly in the agenda. But at this point, Dr. Walsh, you might want to continue a little bit about what the National Merit Scholarship really is all about and how proud we are of our students this evening.
Agreed. I appreciate the opportunity. So, as Superintendent Johnson had stated, the National Merit Scholarship Program established in 1955 begins with taking the PSATs to be a qualifying student. And to become a finalist, in addition to how you do on the PSATs, you also must submit a detailed scholarship application in which they provide information about academic records, participation in school and community activities, and a demonstration of leadership abilities, employment, honors, and other awards. And what's exciting to note is of the approximate 16,000 semifinalists, about 15,000 are expected to advance to the finalist level, and in February, they are notified.
Great. Thank you. So, without further ado, we'd like to recognize each scholar by name after the ceremony is over. We invite you to stay to share some cake and conversation with us. And we will be taking a group picture of our recognized scholars this evening as well. So, Dr. Walsh?
Thank you.
And we have a reader for us this evening, which will be Michelle T.
Allison Barati. We weren't sure either. We should all go left or right. Part of the qualifying round.
You passed.
Daphne Binto. Mia DeStefano. Nicholas Rang.
Claire Duffy. Talia Gilfix. Michael Gobron. Kiera Levinson. Paige Morse. Mary Quinn. Maria Tu. Cassidy Wang. Clarissa Wong. Rohan Yarula. Shouying Zhang. Alexander Chen. Andrew Gao. And Sivan Nocham.
For our scholars, I had occasion to chat with a few parents. They're somewhere in the middle. I think there's a deadline for the harbinger, and there's a few other things going on. So, very good, very good. So, we're so glad you're here. Thank you for being part of our celebration.
Thank you.
And with this time, we'd like to cut the cake.
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 Okay.
Then let us continue on with our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the action on the minutes. Action on the minutes of the open meeting of June 21st, 2017, and action on the executive session minutes of June 21st, 2017. Do I hear any motions?
What? The executive session can be released. So, it's vote to approve and release.
I move that we accept the minutes of the open meeting of June 21st, 2007, and also the 2017, sorry, and also the minutes of the executive session of June 21st, 2017, and to approve and release.
A move by Joan, seconded by Kathy. Is there any discussion or any comments? Nope. All right. Then, all those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Okay, that's three abstentions.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
I have no problem in voting to release, so I'll change mine to...
Okay, let's revote. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Two. All right. Both motions carry. Thank you very much. Moving on to educational policy. We have several approvals.
That's right. And these two look familiar for this time of year, familiar field trips that are taken by our DECA organization. I think last year, we had some great news to share about the formation of an Algonquin Writing Center. And they are pursuing an exciting event at the Capital Area Peer Studying Association Conference in Washington. So, not only are they newly formed, they're newly ready to share all of their good works with others. And we also have approval, preapproval for the music department's overnight field trip, which is traditionally taken in the spring. We can take them individually or we can take them all at once.
All at once.
All at once? I hear a request for all at once.
That's right.
Okay. Do I, are there any questions? Do I have, do I hear any motions?
I would move to approve all three trips as provided in our packet.
Second. Okay, moved by Dan, seconded by Raj. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of all three field trips? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to new business.
Exciting opportunity for new business this evening. We have a number of guest presenters in the audience. And we do have an old business item, but they, that also comes with presentation. And we do have Andy Mariotti, our District Network Administrator, and Julie Doyle in the audience, who will be here to provide a much awaited update, I believe, on our learning management system and all that is tech at the high school. So, if you wouldn't mind, want to move them up?
Yeah, let's do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Andy Mariotti. If you don't know me, I'm the District Technology Manager. I have been working for the school district for 16 years now, starting off at Algonquin as a computer tech. And I've been here since then, since 2002. Thank you for inviting me. I'm just going to talk really briefly about technology and how it supports some of the initiatives that we're doing here in Northborough and Southborough. We've had a great start to the school year. We have a great technology team here at Algonquin. We have a staffing update. We have a new staff person. We lost one great staff person to Northborough, but we have a new one, Patrick Celio. He's a technology specialist. He joined Algonquin this summer, and he's really hit the ground running. And he's done really well, likes to get into the classrooms, help out where necessary, try to make our technology as smooth as possible. We've had new firewall installations at all of our schools, which, you know, is improving the security and dependability of our network and internet connection. We've improved our internet bandwidth here at the high school. We've almost doubled the internet capacity, which is necessary for a lot of the instructional initiatives that we have. And obviously, Canvas, which Julie is going to be talking about in a few minutes, has been, is being rolled out here at the high school first. And it's, from what I hear, it's been a great success being implemented. And we'll hear about that in a second. And, you know, as always, this technology department here, it's really here to implement technology that's there to support the instructional initiatives that we have and the technology, the mission of the school district. And so, I, it's hard for me to come in and talk about technology. I like it to be in the background and in the foreground, these types of things that are going on at the high school and across the district that are really helping to improve instruction, helping teachers and students. So, with that, I'm going to pass this over to Julie.
Thanks, Andy. I just want to double check that we have volume for the projector? I didn't, I don't see the remote anywhere.
I'm hiding it.
Oh, you're hiding it. Okay, just...
They gave me a mission, and I didn't quite accomplish it.
Okay. So, just, I'm going to...
It's going to hit to Greg. We're all set now on the volume.
I might play a video, and I just want to make sure people can hear it. So, I wanted to talk to you tonight about Canvas. I'm very excited about Canvas. I eat, sleep, drink, dream about Canvas. It has been my major role so far this year. So, it's so far, so good. So, let me do some explaining here. Canvas is our new cloud-based learning management system. It is a great digital tool, and it's helping to make teaching and learning easier. It allows teachers to share digital resources, to provide valuable student feedback, to post assignments, and easily communicate with students. It allows students to log into one portal and to access assignment due dates, grades, and other important course information. So, because Canvas was new this year, we found it imperative to provide the necessary training and support for our teachers. So, we actually began the training at the end of the last school year. This summer, we offered some optional PD. We gave more training during the professional development days before school. On any given day in any period, students, actually teachers, students can access this support as well. But teachers can drop in here at the library, and we have teachers who are, it is their duty to provide Canvas support and to be able to answer questions. We also have plans to continue that professional development and training throughout the year. We found it equally important to make sure that our students felt comfortable and had the necessary training and support to use Canvas. But as you probably can figure out, it didn't take them much time at all to figure out how to navigate in Canvas. But we do have, right in our Northborough-Southborough Canvas portal, we have a course that, and in that course, there's student guides and there's how-to videos. We also have had a couple of after-school help sessions, and those have been hosted by our Students Working to Advance Technology Team. So, that has been much appreciated. So, what I'd like to share with you now are a few comments from teachers and about why they like Canvas. So, here's where that volume might...
The remote control is right behind you.
Oh. Right behind me. I'm kidding. No, stop. We'll start this again. It's really good when the technology teacher can't figure out the technology. Andy?
Andy's not behind the scenes, no. Stepping forward.
I actually was here last night practicing in here, and the sound worked.
Usually takes four of us, but there's only three of us.
Greg, we're having flashbacks from the start of school year this year. We just need one student. Have any students left? Where are they? Just unplug it. Just unplug it.
Reboot. Reboot.
Hi, I'm Allison. I work in the Health Fitness Department. I like Canvas because it's easy, I communicate with my students, and they know the expectations.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Pabnes, Department Chair in the Applied Arts and Technology Department, a business teacher. One feature of Canvas that I really liked and I used last week was the analysis feature. I gave an online test, and I was able to run a report that showed my question, the number of correct and incorrect responses. It was a really great tool for me to reflect on the assessment feature.
Hi, I'm Amelia Braun, and I teach in the Social Studies Department. So, one great feature of Canvas that I really enjoy using is the grouping feature, which not only allows me to manually put groups in and connect assignments to those groups, but it also allows me to have Canvas randomly make groups. And the feature of connecting the assignments to the groups will allow me, once I'm grading, to populate all of their grades at the same time. So, it's a great time saver, and if the kids are unhappy with their groups, I can blame it on Canvas. It's a great feature.
Hi, my name is Dan Mackey. I'm one of the guidance counselors here at the high school. I'm really enjoying using Canvas. I actually recently had a student that was out for about two weeks due to medical reasons, and I was able to collect all of her missed work and put a plan into place for her so that she could catch up.
I'm Dan Wiltie from the Science Department, and I've been doing flipped learning for the past four years in my class. And once I adopted Canvas, it's made my students' ability to look at my video lessons and respond to them in a much better way using the graded survey feature. And now, I can see their questions, I can see the responses to those things all right on Canvas, much easier than other elements that I've used in the past.
I'm Calipari. I teach in the Social Studies Department. I think Canvas is a very versatile tool, and one of the things that I think it really does a lot for students is it allows them to have constant access to really well-organized, well-curated set of learning materials. And they have that at their fingertips, no matter where they are. You know, they have access to the entire organized course that they can use, not only at home, but they can take a look at readings if they're out, if they're away, can access the thing on their phone. So, it's really a fantastic resource for them, and it puts everything in one place.
So, I'm Danielle DiCiro. I am the ceramics teacher in the Fine and Performing Arts Department. And I think Canvas is a great tool in letting us use rubrics in order to give feedback to the kids. In previous years, it was kind of a laborious process to print out a rubric, you know, make all the marks, put them in the system, so we give the kids back the grades. And by the time the kids got the grades, they might be disinterested in the actual feedback. We're here, it's very instantaneous, they can get it back as soon as I release them, and it's such a fast process. It also allows us to update the rubrics as needed for the next term, which is a process that's a little lengthy when you have to go back after the fact. But now, it's really quick to move on to the next semester.
All right. Thanks for your patience with the sound. So, another shout-out to the Students Working to Advance Technology Team. A few of the kids surveyed and polled some of their fellow students to ask them about their experiences with Canvas. And as you can see, the students find Canvas to be very user-friendly. They appreciate the fact that all of their learning materials, course materials, assignment due dates are all in one place, and they really love the real-time and quick feedback with More details to follow in the next few months, but plans are underway for us to start using Canvas at Trotter and Melican. So, that will be great to have the Trotter and Melican kids using it. It'll prepare them for when they come to Algonquin. But I also wanted to mention that many colleges and universities are using learning management systems. In fact, a lot of them are using Canvas. So, we are helping to prepare our students for what learning will be like in college. So, I'm really impressed with how easily the teachers and students have adapted. Some of them are still adapting, but have adapted to our new system. And I'm excited about the growth and the future. I'm confident that over time, as the teachers start to feel more comfortable with all the features, that they will start to leverage some of the more advanced features. One of those advanced features that's worth mentioning is the ability to track student mastery of learning standards. And we all know that tracking student mastery and getting that data is what will help us to transform teaching and learning here at Algonquin. That's all I got.
Questions? I have a question. Being a former parent and being a parent who went through the learning curve with Edline, how are the parents reacting to the sort of change, especially those that came from Edline and are now transitioning to Canvas?
So, I think I can assist with that answer.
Okay.
I've had, so, I really want to speak highly to Guidance because they've been really wonderful in helping differentiate between iPass, which is kind of our holding tank of grades, and Canvas, which is that lifetime grading, and how that learning management is integrated. And working with parents and the communication via One calls, our APTO is very supportive. Next week, we're hosting parents to come and learn a little bit more about Canvas and iPass. Lot of conversations over emails. At first, it was, what is the difference between iPass and Canvas? And now that I understand the difference, when do I get my own login? So, we've leveraged working with your student, going over your grades, which was very powerful in parent-teacher conferences last night. But as we started to progress through it, parents picked it up just as quick as some of the students.
Good. Thank you.
I don't know if I missed this, Rob, but besides the teacher posting on the canvas, does this allow for interaction between the student and the teacher if there is a question on something?
Absolutely. Yes, yeah. So, there's some great communication tools, and there's a lot of, there's discussion boards, there are ways that teachers could, in fact, this happened last spring before an AP psychology exam, that the teacher actually held like sort of an online webinar conference, and her, the students were able to sort of log in and ask questions online. So, there's a lot of different ways that teachers and students can communicate, I mean, during school, obviously, but out of school as well.
So, touching on that about the webinar, so that's something that if a teacher wanted somebody to, let's say, interview some masterpieces and have questions going back and forth between the students and the webinar, can they do that type of thing, like after-school hours?
Sure. Yeah, they could. Absolutely. Yeah. There's some great ways, they have some great feedback tools. So, in terms of communication, I don't know if this necessarily answers your question, but if a student submits any type of assignment in any discipline, the teacher actually has the ability to mark up the assignment, but also has the ability to upload an audio file saying, you know, this paper seems to be, you know, hitting all the right points, but perhaps you could work on something else. So, they can upload a video of themselves doing the same thing, too. I don't know if that necessarily addresses your question, but...
Follow-up.
Oh, was it follow-up? Go ahead.
And then, my last comment was, I love the teacher's comment when they said by a student who had an extended absence, and they were able to put a plan together and keep the student, you know, up to date, or even the student who's back. If nothing is lost, they're able to keep the student in pace with the rest of the class. So, I love that teacher's comment about it.
Yeah, that was a guidance council, actually. So, that was really helpful.
That was wonderful.
Is Canvas mobile-ready and is there an app?
Absolutely. Yeah. And the kids are using the app like crazy. Yeah.
So, I don't know if I missed a long call about, so are we, will the parents have a different access code versus the kids, like Edline did?
Yes. So, our goal...
Do they have an email to the parents, or how does that...
So, we are very excited, and last year, we did a smaller pilot of Canvas with educators, and so, parents had access. As we rolled it out at a larger, school-wide level, as Julie had explained, it has taken off more than we could have ever anticipated. We are very excited about it. So, initially, all the students were given the access. The parent portal access, we will hope for mid-year parent portal access for educators that are prepared to release it.
So, I'm not missing something?
Nope. Nope. At first, it was more about the separation between Canvas and iPass.
Right. So, I have the iPass?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to thank Julie and Greg for taking the lead role in bringing this to fruition. I know it's been a conversation and reality a long time coming. And the new admin team for just fully embracing this with everything else that you've had to learn very quickly. You really launched this in a very successful way. So, appreciate getting on board so quickly and moving this initiative forward. There's a lot of people behind the scenes, and Greg, I know you had wanted to...
Yes, I want to thank Julie Doyle for her leadership. She's been outstanding, very organized, very thoughtful in terms of how we've rolled this tool out. So, through Julie's leadership and Andy Mariotti, and also Sue Whalen, have done a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes to make this as seamless as possible. And also, again, the Algonquin leadership team supporting this, and teachers and students. Teachers have really stepped up and learned how to use this new tool and have done an excellent job. So, overall, it's been a, it's been a great story and with a lot more chapters to come.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I totally appreciate the admin support as well, because I feel like, you know, without that support, I don't think we would have had as much success. So, I appreciate the support from Central Office as well as from you guys.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We look forward to future presentations. Okay.
Once where the sound would work?
You know what? The sound eventually worked, and that's all that matters. So, now, we're going to go back to our new business and the update on 2017/18 athletics.
That's right. We ended the year by suggesting that a really great way to start this year is to have our athletic director present the fall season with information about numbers of players and the overall success of the program. If this gentleman looks familiar to you, there is a reason.
Who is that?
He's been... It'll prepare them for when they come to Algonquin. But I also wanted to mention that many colleges and universities are using learning management systems. In fact, a lot of them are using Canvas. So we are helping to prepare our students for what learning will be like in college. So I'm really impressed with how easily the teachers and students have adapted. Some of them are still adapting, but have adapted to our new system. And I'm excited about the growth and the future. I'm confident that over time, as the teachers start to feel more comfortable with all the features, that they will start to leverage some of the more advanced features. One of those advanced features that's worth mentioning is the ability to track student mastery of learning standards. And we all know that tracking student mastery and getting that data is what will help us to transform teaching and learning here at Algonquin. That's all I got.
Questions?
I have a question. Being a former parent and being a parent who went through the learning curve with Edline, how are the parents reacting to the sort of change, especially those that came from Edline and are now transitioning to Canvas?
So I think I can assist with that answer.
Okay.
I've had, so I really want to speak highly to Guidance because they've been really wonderful in helping differentiate between iPass, which is kind of our holding tank of grades, and Canvas, which is that lifetime grading, and how that learning management is integrated. And working with parents and the communication via One calls, our APTO is very supportive. Next week, we're hosting parents to come and learn a little bit more about Canvas and iPass. Lot of conversations over emails. At first, it was, what is the difference between iPass and Canvas? And now that I understand the difference, when do I get my own login? So we've leveraged working with your student, going over your grades, which was very powerful in parent-teacher conferences last night. But as we started to progress through it, parents picked it up just as quick as some of the students.
Oh, good. Thank you.
I don't know if I missed this, Rob, but besides the teacher posting on the Canvas, does this allow for interaction between the student and the teacher if there is a question?
Absolutely.
On something?
Yes, yeah. So there's some great communication tools. And there's a lot of, there's discussion boards, there are ways that teachers could, in fact, this happened last spring before an AP psychology exam, that the teacher actually held like sort of an online webinar conference. And her, the students were able to sort of log in and ask questions online. So there's a lot of different ways that teachers and students can communicate. I mean, during school, obviously, but out of school as well.
So, just about, so touching on that about the webinar, so that's something that if a teacher wanted somebody to, let's say, or interview some masterpieces and have questions going back and forth between the students and the webinar, can they do that type of thing, like after-school hours?
Sure, yeah, they could, absolutely, yeah. There's some great ways, they have some great feedback tools. So in terms of communication, I don't know if this necessarily answers your question, but if a student submits any type of assignment in any discipline, the teacher actually has the ability to mark up the assignment, but also has the ability to upload an audio file saying, you know, this paper seems to be, you know, hitting all the right points, but perhaps you could work on something else. So they can upload a video of themselves doing the same thing, too. I don't know if that necessarily addresses your question, but.
Follow-up.
Oh, was it follow-up? Good.
And then my last comment was, I love the teacher's comment when they said by a student who had an extended absence, and they were able to put a plan together and keep the student, you know, up to date, or even the student who's back. If nothing is lost, they're able to keep the student in pace with the rest of the class. So I love that teacher's comment about it.
Yeah, that was a guidance council, actually, so that was really helpful.
That was wonderful.
Is Canvas mobile-ready and is there an app?
Absolutely, yeah. And the kids are using the app like crazy, yeah.
So, I don't know if I missed a long call about, so are we, will the parents have a different access code versus the kids?
Yes.
Like Edline did?
Yes, so our goal.
How many email to the parents, or how does that?
So we are very excited, and last year, we did a smaller pilot of Canvas with educators, and so parents had access. As we rolled it out at a larger, school-wide level, as Julie had explained, it has taken off more than we could have ever anticipated, we are very excited about it. So initially, all the students were given the access. The parent portal access, we will hope for mid-year parent portal access for educators that are prepared to release it.
So I'm not missing something?
Nope, nope. At first, it was more about the separation between Canvas and iPass.
Right, so I have the i, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Julie and Greg for taking the lead role in bringing this to fruition. I know it's been a conversation and reality a long time coming. And the new admin team for just fully embracing this with everything else that you've had to learn very quickly. You really launched this in a very successful way. So appreciate getting on board so quickly and moving this initiative forward. There's a lot of people behind the scenes, and Greg, I know you had wanted to.
Yes, I want to thank Julie Doyle for her leadership. She's been outstanding, very organized, very thoughtful in terms of how we've rolled this tool out. So through Julie's leadership and Andy Mariotti, and also Sue Whalen, have done a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes to make this as seamless as possible. And also, again, the Algonquin leadership team supporting this, and teachers and students. Teachers have really stepped up and learned how to use this new tool and have done an excellent job. So overall, it's been a, it's been a great story and with a lot more chapters to come.
Absolutely, yeah. And I totally appreciate the admin support as well, because I feel like, you know, without that support, I don't think we would have had as much success. So I appreciate the support from Central Office as well as from you guys.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We look forward to future presentations. Okay.
When's where the sound will work?
You know what, the sound eventually worked, and that's all that matters. So now, we're gonna go back to our new business and the update on 2017-18 athletics.
That's right, we ended the year by suggesting that a really great way to start this year is to have our athletic director present the fall season with information about numbers of players and just the overall success of the program. If this gentleman looks familiar to you, there is a reason.
Who is that?
He's been recycled, but in a very, very. And we all know recycling is the way to go. So Fran, we are very happy to have you back. And I will add that he is also here and joined this evening by Jim Forbus, who is in the back and will speak momentarily. Jim, I don't know if you want to come forward as well, athletics is about boosters as well. And this gives us an opportunity to have both the booster president here this evening as well as Fran.
I have to get reoriented because the seating is different than the last. It is great to be back, I'm excited to be back. I do want to thank Christine for the opportunity, because it's kind of an opportunity for me to give back after all Algonquin did for me those years. I would be remiss if I didn't thank certain people. It's really a tremendous team to work with, to come back and have Susan Baburns there, who is really the rock or the foundation of the athletic department. John Drisco, my athletic trainer, who is truly gifted at what he does. The admin team that has really been so supportive to me and provided me with guidance, because in five years' time, a lot changed. So, you know, I needed updating, and they were a great help to me. The coaches, of course, the level of professionalism that our coaches extend, we're very, very fortunate for that. And Sarah has been great to work with. She even got a head tap at the first football game, which is really something special. For those of you that don't know what a head tap is, the kids in the stands will, it's really a sign of respect. They'll choose a person, and they'll chant that person's name. And they'll keep chanting that person's name until they acknowledge them. But simply turning around or waving isn't enough. They'll keep chanting your name until you literally give them a head tap. And it really is something special, and Sarah got a head tap at the first game, so she's in a good place. But of course, most important of all, the reason we're all here is for the students. And our student athletes are the best, hands down. Not just in terms of performance, but their level of sportsmanship, their level of involvement, their involvement in extracurricular activities, community service. It's just really a very, very special group of young men and women that we're fortunate enough to work with. That being said, some of the updates, fall participation is up by 5%. So we have more kids participating, and it's always great to have as many kids participating as possible. Right now, we're gearing up for tournament play. A number of our teams, the majority of our teams, have been successful enough that they've qualified for tournament play. So they'll be moving forward, and we look forward to that. A couple of milestones, Ken Moran, our boys soccer coach, achieved his 400th win this year, which I don't know where that puts him in the rankings statewide, but it certainly puts him near the top. Because for a coach to have the longevity and the level of success that he's had to attain 400 wins is very special. We have a young lady in our junior class, Tess Reyes, who has shattered all of our girls' cross-country records. Each week, she just keeps getting stronger and stronger. First, she broke the record for Algonquin, and then the next meet, she broke the record for anyone who's ever run on the course. And she just keeps getting better every day. So those are a couple of really exciting milestones that were attained. The Athletic Council is back up and running, it's a great group of kids. It's kind of like a student council, but for athletics. And they've been very, very involved with things that are happening around the school. We had a captain's breakfast this morning, which was great, we had a wonderful turnout. We had a lot of conversation about leadership, responsibility, decision-making, what the qualities are of a captain, how character fits into that. And it was a really engaging morning with a lot of very productive conversation that I'm hoping now will filter back to all the teams. Another thing we had was our class of 1977 was back for their reunion. And it was great to see them with Dick Walsh. They were all hanging out at the track because we interviewed, introduced them at halftime of the football game. And just to see the admiration that they have for Dick and the relationship that they still have with him after all these years. And they came back into the building, the kids from the Athletic Council gave them a tour of the building. And you should have seen their expressions, because of course, they walked in the back where the athletic lobby is now, which didn't exist. So they're trying to gain their bearings in terms of, okay, alright, there's the auditorium, so this used to be this gym, and what happened to the locker rooms, and now look at this weight room. And it was, it was great to see them as they wandered around the building and gained their bearings, but saw all the changes that had taken place. And this also is a Hall of Fame year. So we're proud to be inducting a new class of 10 members into our Hall of Fame, and that will take place on the Friday after Thanksgiving. So it's been a tremendous fall, it's exciting to be back. Already looking forward to the winter season and scheduling the spring. So we are up and running, and I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Questions? Comments? Joan?
Welcome back, Mr. Whitten.
Thank you, Joan.
Put a smile on my face for sure. I would just like to thank you for your leadership and for giving the time back to the district. Some of the initiatives that you've already started, especially the Athletic Council, which I know was always such a backbone of it. But could you just explain to some of the new members on the board what the Athletic Council is and how the athletes become a member of that?
Sure. When I originally got the job here, 20-something years ago, it was the first time that I hadn't been a teacher and a coach. So as full-time athletic director, I needed, for selfish reasons, to find a way to connect with the kids and get to know the kids. So I started what I called an Athletic Council, and I referred to it as a student council but for athletics. And my goal was to empower the kids. And it really took off, and a lot of kids got involved. And what we did was we broke into subcommittees. So, and first of all, anyone can join the Athletic Council, there are no limits. So it's for kids of all seasons, even kids that don't participate on an athletic team can join the Athletic Council if they choose to. So it's open to everyone. We do elect officers, and we do have subcommittees. And that's really where most of the work is done. So we had a subcommittee, well, now we still have it, on Hall of Fame. Because it was actually the Athletic Council who came up with the idea to start the Hall of Fame way back when. Actually, a young woman by the name of Katie Baker, who's being inducted into the Hall of Fame this year. Katie, it was Katie's idea, she was a junior at the time. And she said, "Mr. Whitten, we don't have a Hall of Fame." So we went at that right away. So there's still a Hall of Fame subcommittee, there's a subcommittee on school spirit, there's a subcommittee on policy, subcommittee on community service. Depending upon kind of what the hot topics are, we designed these subcommittees to address those very issues. So right now, we're really focusing on Hall of Fame, school spirit, community service. But we'll also look at other dimensions of the athletic program as well, with the attempt of the, I want the kids to feel as though the program is theirs. I'm just their facilitator, I'm their advocate, but I want the program to belong to them. So that's really how it came about and what it still does.
Joan?
You can shut up.
Something's never changed, Joan.
No, I, the thing is that I liked to, I didn't know that if you were not an athlete, that you could join that council.
Yes.
And that's what's really good.
We have kids who, not yet this year, as of now, I mean, we just kicked it off a month ago. But in a previous lifetime, we had kids on Athletic Council that were just sports fans. And those kids ended up playing a pretty significant role, because a lot of them ended up being announcers at games, or they ran the clocks at games, or they were scorekeepers, or they were team managers. So they actually got involved in the running of the athletic department, in the athletic program, although they weren't necessarily on the field of play. But it is open to all.
Last one. Last one. Could we expect that you would be reporting back on the fall sports, winter sports, and spring sports? So we would be getting updates from you at different times?
I saw Fran's expression and said, "We didn't talk about this." We haven't had a discussion.
I just remember that from previous years, so I was just wondering.
I'm around.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy?
I have to say that the kids, having kids playing sports, they love that you got them the T-shirts.
Oh, the T-shirts, thank you for bringing that up.
That was such a big, it was so awesome to see the kids, the football team coming for the poster party, and they all had their pride T-shirts on, and it was nice.
I have to thank.
They appreciate that.
I have to thank the Booster Club for that. I wanted to do something to kick off the year to kind of promote school spirit and get a sense of unity amongst the teams. So I asked the Booster Club if they'd be kind enough to pay for T-shirts for all of the athletes. And we designed a T-shirt that says, I should have brought it with me or brought a picture. Slipping, I'm rusty. Says, "T-Hawk Nation" on the front, and then on the back, it says, "Has Pride." And each letter in the word "Pride" stands for something else. The P for passion, the R for respect, the I for initiative, the D for dedication, and the E for excellence. And I went to each team and talked to them about the importance of not just getting a T-shirt, but what that T-shirt symbolizes or represents, and those words and what they meant and represented. And I tied them into our all-sports night that we had in the fall. Melissa Fostino, who's actually here in the audience tonight, is doing an internship with me for her master's degree. And she basically put together the PowerPoint presentation for me. But we integrated into that PowerPoint presentation the words "Pride," "Respect," "Initiative," "Dedication," "Excellence," so that the kids start to see a theme. And Sarah has been great about promoting T-Hawk Nation and T-Hawk Pride. So we're trying to, those T-shirts are symbolizing a unity that we're trying to bring about.
They appreciate that you did that for them, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, excuse my voice. To me, for the Boosters Club mission, which is really to complement and enhance the experience of the student athletes at the school, this was a perfect investment for us. It was really, and Fran was so passionate about it, it's like, don't brain her, let's do this.
Thank you, thank you.
Dan?
So I'll say, I'm also one of those who is glad to see you return. And I love what you said about, you know, leading with sportsmanship as well. So, you know, they'll, kids will have games where they're gonna win or lose. But you need to win with respect, and you need to lose with respect in class. And so the more that you can help, you know, continue to institute that in every one of our programs through the coaching and the kids, and those parents and kids in the stands, where, you know, I've been to many a basketball game or a football game here. It's an emotional experience for many of the parents in particular. And, but the more that you, you know, can help, you know, demonstrate to everyone what it means to play and then win or lose with class, you know, goes a long way to, you know, showing, demonstrating how all these kids will be, you know, can be winners in the long run, so.
We, another one of our subcommittees on Athletic Council is sportsmanship. And we've spent a lot of time talking about what those standards should be and what that level of excellence should be. I've gone right up into the stands with the kids a couple of times already this year, just to say hi, see what they were talking about. They have been incredibly receptive, though. They really, the kids have been fantastic. If a chant begins that isn't up to our standards, they've been very good about shutting it down, and I haven't heard it again. At my coaches' meeting in the fall, we talked about sportsmanship and the significance of it. So it's out there, people are aware of it, I think they're making good choices. And I, it's improving. With each game, with each outing, the emotions do get high, especially now as we approach tournament. I haven't gone out and sat with the parents yet, but I might have to do that, too. But we're getting there, and I think we're making strides. And it certainly is a priority.
And sometimes you just, when you say it to them once, you know, especially a parent, it hasn't, they realize, and maybe they're, sometimes it's an out-of-body experience for some of these parents.
It is.
And, but please keep that up. I think that will demonstrate a lot for our kids and what it means to, you know, to really participate with class as well, so thank you.
Will do, thank you.
Fran, I know we chatted a little bit, and the whole notion of impact testing was here when you were here before.
Yep.
The opening presentation that you had for fall sports season was so well-received, and just everyone was talking about the success it was. And in part, it's your passion, but also the administrative team was present, and they were there chanting as well. And good feedback on that. One of the elements that was not here when you were here before was the notion of impact testing. And so the school committee authorized approval for that and moved forward with that about a year and a half ago. So I don't know if you have an update in terms of participants, or whether that's moving forward.
I do have that, I had it prepared for the last meeting, so I haven't updated it since then. But based on tracking back and talking to both the nurses and John Drisco about where we're at with the program, for the 2016-2017 year, we had 245 student athletes who registered for and took the impact test. Now, it's good for two years. So this fall, so far, we've only had 16 athletes sign up for it and take it. But keep in mind, close to 200 of them don't need to because they already took it. So that's where the numbers stand on the impact testing and where it's at right now. It's available to all the kids. We, Sherry Karen, the school nurse, came to the fall sports night presentation and spoke about it. I actually just talked to her today and gave her the date for the winter one, so that she can come to that. So again, we can make all of our winter athletes aware of that same opportunity and availability to them. And we'll do the same thing in the spring.
I think Fran eloquently thanked the Booster Organization, and that's a great segue to introduce Jim Forbus and to, again, say thank you for the constant support.
I was hoping to take a few minutes just to tell you a little bit more about the Boosters Club. First off, I don't know if you've been, if you went to the football game last Friday night, but the new Bose sound system is up and running, and it's a beaut. So it's a, it's a big step up from what we had. That was a major investment for us last year, so I very appreciate it. In both Bose donating equipment, and the school committee and the school working with us to make this project happen. Because I think we all win from something like this. The Boosters Club is a 501(c)(3) organization. We are incorporated in the state of Massachusetts as a public charity. All of our tax filings are up to date with the Commonwealth. We are permitted to conduct raffles and games of chance within Northborough, within Northborough. So technically, we can't go to Southborough. But I think we probably get some slack there. We operate through an executive committee that sets policies and makes sure that we're compliant with federal and state laws. We have general liability insurance, which covers all of our activities, including activities on school property. So if we have fundraising activities on the property, our insurance is primary on that, on those activities. We manage 30 separate accounts within the organization, so that's every club, team, sport. Different genders, 30 separate accounts, so it gets pretty complicated. We have 30 parent reps that manage the interactions between those clubs, those teams, the athletic director, and the organization. So that's actually, from a positive perspective, that's 30 little fundraising machines. Most of our income is through direct fundraising. We also, and we, our income is about $200,000 to $250,000 per year. We get about $20,000 to $25,000 a year in direct donations. So that's 100% tax-deductible donations. We, our spend is, really, it's all over the place. It depends on the teams and the circumstances. We fund scholars. We, uh, we fund scholarships, we, uh, fund banquets at the end of the season, we fund awards. We have targeted investments like the T-shirts, like the Bose Project, uh, the entryway garden at the stadium, the, uh, monitor in the hallway outside of the athletic office. Um, you know, and really, uh, our, um, the decision-making process, we work closely with the A.D. to figure out, and the coaches, to figure out where investments should go. Um, so it's very important, that relationship, to make sure that our dollars are most effective in, uh, working forward. I think, uh, I think that covers the spectrum. Any questions from anybody?
Wow. That was thorough. No questions.
I think we're all in awe.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we're looking forward to working with the Booster Organization to work out some of the details around accepting all of those wonderful donations that you mentioned, and really, you know, acknowledging the boosters in a public way and, um, in a more formal process. And we had talked about having Jim or a representative return each season, and sort of addressing the donation piece and accepting that donation in a very public way. Certainly always giving a nod for the support and the assistance that you've provided. And continue to work with the boosters around, uh, developing some policy language that will allow us to do more and, and open up some more windows of opportunity for fundraising for the boosters and, and the partnership that we are privileged to celebrate tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Fran. We will see you at the winter sport time.
And speaking of donations.
Oh, and speaking of donations, next on the agenda is approval of grants and donations.
That's right. We would like approval and acceptance of this generous donation for the, uh, stadium garden outside of the, um, entryway on our fields. And that donation was made in part by the Garoskis family with support, as Jim mentioned, um, from the Athletic Booster Organization. If you have not had a chance to, to view the, um, the entryway, it's, uh, "Welcome to Algonquin, Home of the Tomahawks," and a, um, plaque indicating that it was donated by the Garoskis family in memory of mom and dad, and also from the Booster Organization. And I want to thank Fran for, um, helping to move that forward and to move it forward in such a, a way that not only celebrates the, the folks that think of our schools, that think of our school and donate to our school community, but also, as, uh, Sarah's been saying, Teahawk Nation. So, uh, it's there for all to see, and I think it's a, a nice representation of both.
So, I would ask that we accept the donation.
Moved.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Okay, moved by Dan, seconded by Paul. Uh, are there any questions or discussion? If you haven't been to the stadium in a while, and you remember it as being basically a mud pit with a few blades of grass, it really is quite a transformation. You should go look at it. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, on to you next.
Can we move for a little more variety and move up the next speaker?
Yes. Fine with me. Anybody have, okay?
This is the first opportunity in some time that we've actually heard from, um, as a department, the Student Sports Services. It is their first appearance at school committee, so as you can imagine, uh, they're excited to be here. So, moving them up, um, will leave some of the anxiousness of that. So, um, with that, I'm, I'm Christine Murphy. Marie, would you like to introduce your, um, as Director of Student Sports Services, your team?
Uh, we have Christine Murphy tonight, who is the Special Education Administrator for Instructional Sports Services, her second year here at Algonquin, and Felicia Ruttigliato, who joins her as our team coach, and, uh, in her third year as team coach here in high school, and Monique Cludier, who is our transition coordinator for the high school.
Good evening.
It's on.
It's on.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank Superintendent Johnson, the school committee, and Marie Allen for all of your continued support for us. Um, I am going into my second year here at Algonquin. Felicia is our instructional coach, or department coach, and... Thank you. Okay. Let me get it back to full screen. Okay. A little bit, our presentation overview, we're gonna talk about our individual programs, and then we'll talk some about transitional planning. We have seven different programs here at Algonquin. We have academic learning centers, we have a language-based learning disability program, a transitional learning center program, our CASL, New England Center for Children Partnership, which we often refer to as NAC. We have our Reaching Individualized Success Education Program, which we refer to as RISE, our access program, and our community access program. In our academic learning centers, students with individualized education programs are provided with support to meet their individualized, individual goals and develop their transitional skills. Related services, counseling services, speech-language therapy, reading tutoring, are scheduled during those academic learning center times. In our Language-Based Learning Disability Program, this program is designed for students with specific learning disabilities and follows a language-based instructional model. The emphasis is on skill acquisition in reading, writing, and oral language. It uses research-based strategies in a multimodal approach to instruction. It provides rigorous grade-level content instruction, and we have a school-based consultation to the program and general education teachers from the Landmark School Outreach Partnership. In our Transitional Learning Centers, students have individualized programs with more intensive academic, social, and communication supports. Students' individualized needs are addressed through their individualized education plan and with focus on participating in the general education classes to the maximum extent possible. Our Reaching Individualized Success Education Program, our RISE program, is our therapeutic individualized program designed for students whose social and emotional challenges impede their ability to succeed in the general education setting. The academics are delivered by general education and special education teachers and staff. There's a dedicated school adjustment counselor who works closely with family and outside providers with the goal of returning students to the general education setting. Our CASL, NAC Partnership Program, which CASL stands for Communication, Access, Socialization, Transactional Supports, Learning, and Emotional Regulation. This is an intensive specialized instructional program for students that have a disability that causes significant cognitive, social, and behavioral challenges. Components of the program is a one-to-one staffing ratio, and teaching strategies include a heavy emphasis on applied behavioral analysis, systematic data collection across settings throughout the school day. Instruction is focused on academic skills, functional life skills, social pragmatics, emotional regulation, and behavior management. Our access program is a short-term program designed to promote the stabilization, resiliency, and reintegration of students with or without disabilities experiencing temporary medical or mental health challenges in a supportive school environment. Our Community Access Program, our CAP program, is Algonquin's postgraduate program for students between the ages of 18 and 22. It's a direct, hands-on, specialized instructional program to help students transition successfully from the public school system to the adult world. And to help talk more about our CAP program, I'm gonna hand off the microphone to Monique Cludier to continue with the presentation.
Thank you. As you can see, we have a lot going on. And I thank you all for having us and all you do to help us with this. And a big piece of transition happens, especially 18 to 22, but in all of those situations. And what we do for the 18 to 22-year-old is there's a lot of community volunteering. That's part of the program to try to help integrate with the community and work with the students' interests, with their vision, as noted in their individual IEP. Some wonderful community partnerships and connections have happened through this. They've included the YMCA, which, our CAP program got an award, which we're pretty excited about. Families were invited to come with the students, and they had a big banquet, and encouraged the students for their volunteering, and gave them an award, which was great. Work with the food pantry, which, um, has a lot of different needs, and scouting is happening now, a lot of, um, donations. Marlboro Hospital, Sheridan Tarot Hotel, the Z School has been a wonderful partnership. And sometimes, there's so many things that can be done towards transition to adulthood, and Sue Winton has just been wonderful in trying to connect that partnership. And some students had been there in their younger years and now get to help in their older years. And, and it's, um, it's a great partnership. Special Olympics, which offers so much for our students, the Senior Center Bistro, Coleman House, Community Harvest Program, animal shelters. Um, these vocational opportunities and training, um, they give connections, and they've led to paid employment, and it's based on that individual student. And we're very excited to be able to partner with Framingham State this year. So, they have a diverse, um, scholars program, which is new. And, um, our, two of our students were able to be interviewed and get accepted, and they received an acceptance letter, and it was really such a big part of their vision to be a part of a campus. And it's, it's been beautiful to see them participate and grow so much by connecting with that 18 to 22-year-old program. Um, they engage in courses, internships, and student life. And then a whole group of us went one day, just have lunch and be a part of the campus, and it was fabulous. So, those are some fun photos. Um, transition planning, um, that's a big topic, and, um, transition assessment and planning is an ongoing process. Um, and the idea is to understand the student's vision and build self-determination towards their own post-secondary goals. So, that's what the idea is. And the self-determination, and a lot of this is defined by the Department of Ed, um, is a combination of skills, knowledge, and beliefs that enable a person to engage in goal-directed, self-regulated, autonomous behavior. And as such, self-determination includes an understanding of one's strengths, limitations, together with a belief of oneself as capable and effective. And that really is for all students transitioning, that building that awareness is important. And this is, um, put together, again, by the Department of Ed, and it's a good visual. Um, a lot of stakeholders got together, and each symbol means so much. But the biggest piece that they want to get across, and it is for all Algonquin students, really, is that this self-determination is what can propel someone for, forward. And it should be student-driven, that they have their own vision, their own interests, their own, um, knowledge of their abilities and where they want to go and, and successes. So, this self-determination is the center that, with that vision star that propels them forward. And then Felicia is gonna talk more about the boosters.
Yeah, so the infinity symbol is really representing, um, all of our students. And the fact that they really don't get to their post-secondary, um, successes without all of us, without their family, the school, the community. Um, in teaching here at Algonquin for the last 12 years, I can honestly say that we have grown tremendously. It's wonderful to walk through the halls and see kids on a daily basis working together on their academics, playing, um, games together for athletics. We have students who are varsity athletes. Um, it is so nice to see them singing and making music together, and plays and in chorus, and just working together in general. We are truly an inclusive school, and it's just a beautiful thing to see. Um, I like to say, the old saying is, um, you know, it takes a village. Well, I say it takes the Algonquin Village to really make our kids reach their post-secondary successes. These are just a few, um, of our lovely pictures of our kids. And we would have shared more if we could, but, um, maybe we can have some of them come back again someday and do some things for you and talk to you some about what they're doing. Um, these are a lot of our partnerships that we have, and as you can see, there's, there's tons of them. Um, so, between Best Buddies and DECA and all the other community partnerships, our kids are reaching their post-secondary goals and meeting their vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any questions for us?
Questions? No. No questions.
Wow. Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you. Marie, do you want to add anything?
Just, uh, I think that we've grown in our, uh, our continuum of services here also, so that not only are we growing at the high school, but we take a look back. We take a look at the middle school and the elementary school and make sure that the continuum services is consistent and is being built. So, that's why you see so many programs that we offer, and it's truly individualized, and it's truly a partnership with everybody, uh, including the middle school and the elementary school, because we have to take a look back.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. That was excellent. Okay, where are we? Okay, moving back to new business, appointment of the Assistant Treasurer.
In June of last year, we, um, voted to invite Christine Tagback as our district regional treasurer. And, um, a couple of years ago, we started a practice of also having an assistant treasurer appointed. It provides, um, added support in terms of moving through documentation should the treasurer not be available to sign very important documents as part of doing our businesses of regional school district. Lynn Winter is not here, so it's not a case of nominating someone because they're not here. It actually is a question that I asked prior to, uh, the meeting, and she has agreed to serve in that capacity again this year if it's the will of the committee.
So-willed.
So-willed. Let's make it a little bit more of a, an actual motion.
So, um, if I have this right, so we, this is a motion to appoint, uh, the Assistant Treasurer, and that, um, well, what else do you need?
As Lynn Winter.
As Lynn Winter.
2017-2018 school year.
So moved.
Okay. Seconded. Moved by Dan, seconded by Raj. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Be sure to call in after.
Oh, I'm sure she is waiting by the phone.
I'm sure she's waiting by the phone.
Update on class size ratios.
In your packets, um, is a preliminary, um, update on class ratios. It's fairly early in the cycle. It is a tool that we use as we approach budget season, which is fast approaching. Um, and we will be, uh, talking a lot more about budget as we move forward next month, November, December. And, um, again, it's, it's a preliminary document. We'll be providing additional information as we move closer to budget season. One of the great, uh, follow-ups that we haven't had an opportunity to share is over the past three or four years, we've been attempting to move in a couple of areas our .8 to a 1.0, particularly in social studies and in world language. Uh, we know from last year's presentation that those class sizes were approaching cap and over cap in most cases. Um, we also, uh, had a conversation about our ELL, growing ELL population, and, uh, we were able, because we had some extraordinarily successful hiring over the summer, to remain within our appropriated budget. When we, um, approved the .5 position for ELL, it was discussed at school committee that it was our hopeful intent that if our hiring, um, landscape was favorable, we would definitely want to re, um, reinstate another .5 as originally discussed during budget season. We also, you might notice, there are three assistant principals, uh, because, again, of, um, unanticipated changes in the overall staffing landscape through the summer. We were able to reinstate our third assistant principal, and I'm pleased to say that that took a lot of work from a lot of people to make sure that we put the people in place that we needed to, that we've been talking about for years, and stay within our budget parameters. So, um, we are in a very good shape, position with staff this year. And we were able to do that, I think, through a lot of good hiring, through a lot of good financial work. financial work from Central, working together as a team and trying to support the kinds of things that we've talked about here at school committee in a very financially, fiscally responsible way. And I think as we finalize some more of the numbers, we'll be able to see the overall impact in reduction in class sizes and maybe even some increase in sections that we were not able to offer. Last year, we had a lot of conversation about how many students really want to be in study and how many do not. And that we really appreciated the best place for them to be is in a classroom setting, unless for some reason they chose to be in a study hall. And a number of reasons can change. And so we were able to realize that. It's a great way to start a school year with a strong administrative team. And the impact has truly been felt to have that in place. So to have, you know, the energy and enthusiasm, I can't wait for Sarah to start her principal's report, so I'll end this quickly. The kinds of activities that have taken place and, you know, Fran's example of his passion is felt as you walk through the halls. And that's all very, very positive. And this has afforded our team to be able to start fully staffed at the start of the year. So I thank everyone for helping that come to fruition.
Could I just ask, I know this is preliminary, but as we move forward and, you know, sort of dive into these numbers? These are in moments, okay.
So there's a handout in the class size.
So the class size, we have history as well as projections.
Yes, and we'll be sharing that as we move forward. So I would say tonight, it's just information and we'll be talking more about that next month as we dig into the budget process as well.
Okay.
And that's in your packet.
Any questions? Let's move on. Speaker series distribution.
There has been a lot of conversation about a presentation called If Only that will be coming up November eighth. And Greg, I can chime in anywhere here, appreciate. It is a very, very powerful video that I would encourage all parents to attend, to try to view that either remotely, it's available on YouTube, or to come to the Coalition presentation that's scheduled for November eighth. It's going to be a two-hour event. There will be booths, there will be, you know, healthcare providers, a lot of information available to parents, an hour preceding the actual viewing. And then there will be a panel discussion after that. We shared this with the NASA team and we had a very, very packed agenda and we weren't able to get through any of the agenda. We spent the entire time really discussing what we just experienced together as a leadership team and really talking about the best place to go with this information. We have extended an invitation, my office has extended an invitation, to the SOS, PTO, and APTO to sort of preview this. And we have some of our support, Student Support Services, behavioral specialists and so forth, who have agreed to attend as well, so that we can really understand the parents' reaction before we move this forward November eighth. We are not sponsoring, we are sort of hosting this event. And it is the Coalition, the North Borough South Borough Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition that is moving this forward. So Greg worked very hard with Lori Pardee and our Health and Wellness Committee to see that we were part of this cycle of presentations that are moving through the state for this viewing. And I'll turn it over to you, Greg.
So the only, I echo all the remarks. And the only thing I would add is that that evening, there will be in a wrestling gym, an exhibit hidden in plain sight, which is a simulation of a teenager's bedroom. And it will give some parents who might have some concerns about their children's, maybe use of illegal substances, where to look in the bedroom. And it will give them some tips and hints. So that exhibit will be set up that night in the wrestling gym as well.
We've had lots of questions and there's been no shortage of emails that have been moving back and forth about, you know, what's going to transpire. And we've tried to work very much with the Coalition. In fact, they will be meeting with myself and Lori Pardee on Monday to make sure that the presentation that evening is very formalized. John Wortman, the minister in South Borough Church, I think will be the facilitator of the conversations. And so we will be meeting on Monday to try to finalize a lot of the little and, but very important details that remain. With respect to student viewing, the administrative team, I think, is being very thoughtful and being very cognizant of the best way to share this information with our students. It is not uncommon for us to show sort of preventive care types of videos. I sent an email to the SOS and said, you know, I've been in education for thirty-two years and I was really impacted by what I saw in a way that I really haven't been with past presentations. So we're being very thorough with making sure that we are providing the supports necessary for our students and also our parents as we move forward with this. And so there's lots of information out there. It's on our website. We'll be sending out another reminder, but it's definitely something to see. And important message to be heard and delivered.
So I think I spoke about this before. So if parents come to see it on November eighth, will they then have the opportunity to get access to show their kids? And I only say this because I understand the parents' part of it. I really think that something has to be done as far as kids seeing something, because there's a lot going on right now.
So there's multiple layers.
So we can talk to them, but I do think that if it's that powerful, you know, for some kids, I wouldn't, I think that they should see some stuff right now.
So I know that at each building level, the Student Support Services teams are previewing it and having those very same conversations about the most effective but the most responsible way to share this information with students. I met with the middle school principals the other day and we had, you know, a different kind of conversation because it's a different age span. The video is available on YouTube. It's not, you know, it's readily available. But context is very important and supports are also important to have readily available as this moves forward. So I think we're being, as we always try to be, aware and thoughtful and thorough.
Big kudos for the hiding in plain sight demonstration or setup, whatever you want to call it, because I got to say that I'm sure that most parents don't even know what they're looking at, forget what they're looking for. So that is a great idea.
Any other comments? Okay, well, stay tuned for that. MASC, joint conference review and appoint.
Information on this year's conference is in the packet. As we always do, we look and reflect on the resolutions that are proposed. This year, unlike the past, it has one theme, Chapter Seventy, Foundation Budget Review Commission. I'm excited, there's going to be one presentation, Chapter Seventy, in seventy minutes. So we have one minute for that many resolutions. So I'm looking forward to sort of speed-moving through Budget Foundation Review Commission. We will be revisiting this. It's just sort of FYI information in the packet at this point, because after we return from the conference, we do discuss the different resolutions and the status that was, or the votes that were taken around certain initiatives. As we know, Kathleen's probably more knowledgeable than anyone, what they look like now may not look like anything after it comes out of the conference. We don't, I don't know if we have anyone from region who is planning to attend the conference. It's earlier than usual. It is a week earlier. Greg and myself will be going down with any school committee members that are attending. John Kane, again, it's not because he's not here. He did let me know that he's going. And if it was the will of the committee, because there was no opportunity for other delegates to attend this year, he would serve dual role. He will be the voting delegate for the North Borough School Committee and graciously has agreed to be the voting delegate for the Regional Committee. And if that's the will of the committee, we just need to vote to appoint John.
So moved.
Second. Move to appoint John Kane as our delegate from the Regional School Committee, moved by Dan, seconded by Joan. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Moving on to superintendent's report to the committee.
And without further ado, I think I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Walsh and her administrative team. There has been a lot going on. You might have noticed a multi-page, full, chock-full of great information about what's been taking place here at the high school. And that was just, you know, from her start into one month. So I'm going to turn this over to Sarah.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, it is chock-full. Both September and October are in the double digits, but I do promise to get it down to three or four pages moving forward now that I've had the opportunity to be in front of school committee. Before I dive into the excitement of the principal's report, I want to demonstrate the shared leadership, collaboration, and teamwork of our administrative team. And each member has prepared to speak briefly about an item that they oversee. And since we started with twelfth grade and introductions, we're going to start with ninth grade in this mini presentation. So I'll start with Tim, who oversees ninth, and then with Andy, who has eleventh and twelfth, and end with Michelle, or tenth and eleventh, and end with Michelle for twelfth before turning it back to me. Tim?
Thank you. So having just started my tenure here, I came right in and got involved with freshman orientation over the summer and was glad to know that there were some very able advisors that helped coordinate that, Ms. Amelia Braun and Ms. Kristen Turner, who are the advisors for our peer mentor group. They had about a hundred or so upper-class students who came to lead the festivities and familiarize our new ninth graders with the building and with some of the processes that they are going to need to follow as they join the school. Ongoing, of course, they, the freshmen are learning the ways of T-Hawk Nation in their classes and in the Library Resource Center. We've elected class representatives to seven positions and they are working with class advisors Brittany Burns and Sean Staines. So they're going to start putting together some fundraising activities and activities for the class. And that's my report on the freshman class.
Thank you, Tim. And for those that experienced it as parents, they got to experience the excitement, the cheering in the day of the orientation. Lot of glitter involved, lot of glitter involved. So it was quite the event. And so I'm just going to introduce now Andy for tenth and eleventh, although I think he's going to speak about our amazing advisories and clubs.
Yes, so sophomores and juniors, juniors had homecoming last week and sophomores have multiple events coming up. A few weeks ago, we had the opportunity to hold our annual club extravaganza. We have sixty-something clubs here at the school, anything from like knitting to sign language and everything in between. So this is an opportunity for kids, the student population, to go out and see these different clubs. They put up displays and it's just a really neat day for the students who are promoting their clubs and the students who aren't in a club, freshmen right through senior year, to see what's out there for clubs and for opportunities to join, get involved in the school in another capacity. So it was a great turnout. Renee Molten is the director of the student club. She put it all together. She did a great job just having, promoting the event and then the kids really just, like always, came through and had some awesome displays out there. Robotics was out there with their robot. A few other clubs were out there with their kind of specialty items too. So it was neat to see. It was great turnout.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. And another exciting opportunity to add on to that, an Algonquin way that has been established, if students are interested in something and they get a group together and an advisor, it's promoted, they continue that excitement. So we really do push to create that niche for every student at Algonquin. And I've already received three or four initiatives for new clubs. Andy doesn't know about that yet, because it's going to make sense. But it's just really supports the traditions that we have established in Algonquin. So I'm going to transition to Michelle, who has seniors.
And I have had the pleasure of to be the assistant principal for the class of 2018 since their freshman year. And they have had a very successful, yet very busy start to their final year at Algonquin. Among other events, the class held a tailgate at homecoming just last week. Many of them participating in the rehearsals for the upcoming school musical Legally Blonde. They're planning their annual gold rush at another football game in the near future. And that, in addition to applying for college and attending their classes, stay very busy, but I'm looking forward to finishing their high school career with it. At least in part.
What's really exciting about Michelle's position is that she's had the opportunity to loop with her seniors. So she knows them over the years and has grown with them as they've gone through their high school career. And there's a wonderful picture in the principal's report that captures the seniors enjoying that moment in which they take their picture out on our stadium field. And the beginning of the yearbook and the end of the yearbook was their freshman year and their senior year, along with Michelle, who was there to help them grow through the process. They were very excited. They were amazing in their behavior. They supported each other. They helped to pick up the backpacks. They see some emotions, really, really excitement for our seniors. Wonderful start to the year. And that's a true testament to the shared collaboration that we have with the administrative team. And thank you for the support and allowing us and supporting us and adding that extra administrator, because you can see the benefits to our students and our parents in a way that we're able to support all of our students in their endeavors. So without further ado, I'm excited to jump in the principal's report, but I will keep it short, even though it might be like fourteen, fifteen pages. I just truly thank the opportunity to share all the amazingness that's going on and the support that you give us to make it happen. So I promise not to read it, although I really want to read every last item. I tried to chunk it in, what's going on in academics, like the Algonquin As, athletics, activities, and then some departmental updates to really see where the benefits go in the financial and energy support that goes on into Algonquin. So one of the items I wanted to bring up is our library. Kim Honey, our new librarian, has started trivia Thursday mornings. It's whatever comes to her mind, but it draws a large crowd to the library just to kind of collaborate and talk about fun topics, get those freshmen and seniors talking and create those really special bonds, something simple, Thursday trivia, Thursday mornings, along with the other initiatives in the library. A wonderful cross-curricular item that's going on now is our video production class is integrating the thematic approach of our Summer Reading of Courage. And it's wonderful to see the two departments kind of juxtaposed and looking at the different ways that you can expand on the literature. So it's one of the academic updates. As everyone has experienced, our pet band has participated now in the North Borough Apple Fest. They participated in our South Borough Heritage Day. Our jazz improv class did a wonderful fundraiser under Eric's watch, in which all of the students' names are listed. They volunteered their time to be a part of the event. And on top of that, they have Legally Blonde coming up and Fine Arts, which Michelle mentioned. And I believe coming up in just a few weeks, which I'll get to, next week, we have our chorus and our band performances, and I'll give you the specific dates in a minute. While all this is going on, we are hosting our foreign exchange students from France and Germany, which is a wonderful opportunity for our students to experience that, as our parents have stepped up and are hosting the students along with this. And it's genuinely, as Felicia said, the Algonquin Village, to help raise our students. Along with hosting the foreign exchange students, our students get to experience what's going on overseas, how they experience education, and they practice their language. They practice, you know, I hear the students speaking in French when they're here, practicing their world language application. Forensic science had a wonderful community support. We had State Trooper Pete English, who is a local resident. He came in as a guest speaker to discuss multiple topics with the students and how they apply some of the forensic science items live time. So the kiddos are learning it, but then they're applying it as they're doing it and then having, you know, that great relationship with one of our family members coming in and supporting them in the process. As Fran spoke, I'm now on to athletics. The athletics is really skyrocketing. I am so lucky and pleased and appreciative of the opportunity to have Fran come back. I thank Central Office Superintendent support, school committee support for this. It's been a wonderful foundation. What Fran didn't mention, I wanted to make sure to give him kudos for, is that he has created this wonderful intersport competition, meaning sports teams get pride coins for going to other sports competitions. And so what that does is it kind of creates that great culture and morale and good character in the stands, because they're part of the athletic council, but they're also there cheering on their peers. And it promotes a greater participation rate in our students being at the games and the functions. Kind of that T-Hawk Nation, that T-Hawk pride. So that's why you're seeing a lot more cheering, a lot more excitement, the roller coaster out there. I've brought my students to many games. I think Kathy witnessed a timeout. My children to many games. There was a slight timeout. Four minutes, four minutes. But it's just such a family-inviting environment. You know, my son is two and a half, runs up and down and high-fives all the kids yelling "T-Hawk Nation." It's really, really exciting. And there's that change that we're talking about, that Fran has brought in and established that good culture, that good culture and character. And then for the activities and clubs, which Andy spoke about, so while I just wanted to point out, our beekeepers club, we did not lose the bees. I know that there were some bees on campus. The bees are where they need to be. There's the choco. But what's exciting- But what's exciting about the beekeepers' club is the students had an initiative in the spring, and they worked in writing a grant, they received a local grant, and now because they were so passionate about this and all the science behind it, Ms. Zinni stepped off, our department head for science, and they have this wonderful beekeeper club, and they were out there, there were no bees involved in the items that they brought, promoting just this niche that children could gravitate to. And that's so exciting to see children excited about what they're learning and applying at lifetime, like real-time, so I wanted to make sure that I, that I brought that up. And you can see that I'm flipping. In the departmental news, I think it was really exciting, Mary Beth Pappas, the department head for the Applied Arts, spoke well about our HR block budget challenge. It's something that both our economics and our financial literacy classes use to do lifetime financing, so the children are working with H&R to kind of develop these financial plans and apply their applications lifetime. So, they're taking the work from the paper and experiencing it with each other and giving them those lifetime skills. I didn't want to forget the Fine Arts, so we have the Legally Blonde coming up, as Michelle mentioned, starting November 30th, we have three showings, very, very excited about this. And next week is our Fall Corral Concert, October 25th at 7:30 PM, going to draw a big crowd, one of the administrators will always be there for support. And our Fall Instrumental Concert is on November 1st at 7:30 PM. So, two very exciting events, then followed up by the play. They're always busy, though, as I just said, they were involved in both parades and supporting them. I promise, that might be it. That is it. That was pretty good.
Thank you.
So, you can see that I'm extremely excited, I know it's multiple pages, and I promise to get it down, but the opportunity that you give and your support and the community support makes the children's wishes come to fruition, and we're very appreciative of it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions. We know where the bees are.
So, I just want to tell you that parents are very excited that you're communicating with them, that you're sending out, we're getting a lot of communications, and we were talking about it a few weeks ago, and one mom's like, "Ooh, I got another notification" from Principal Walsh, she's like, "I'm not complaining, I really..." But it's good, because we're figuring out what's going on, and it's nice to get more information from the school.
I appreciate that, because when I send the One Call out, it starts a great conversation with the parent. If there's a misconception or clarification that's needed, which is how we realized we needed to offer some more support on differentiating between Canvas and iPass, so the One Call's been an amazing tool for me.
Some parents do appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
So, I'd like to let you know that.
Thank you.
Joan?
I'd just like to say welcome to you and your leadership team, and in all the enthusiasm, I can see why we're, the T-Hawk Nation is doing really well this year. So, thank you, and wonderful collaboration with the boosters and also with Fran Whitten and all your staff, it's really wonderful. And I've heard from a staff member who just said that it was, the energy for even the staff, the things that you're doing, there's, I think you're having a Halloween costume coming up or something?
We're waiting, there's a big vote going on with the students, so it's going to be...
Oh, even before the costumes come out, you have a good vote, huh?
I think we have a pretty good vote, I think we have a good lead. Yeah. I'm biased, though, right?
But it's nice, because when you hear from a staff member who says, "I'm excited", and there's new things that are happening, that's what the most parts, because they spend most of their time here, so, thank you to all you, and welcome aboard, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, Joan.
Thank you very much, welcome, everybody, welcome back. And that was fabulous. And I, my apologies that we didn't have a September meeting, and I realize that puts you sort of in a, you know, fifteen-page document position, but we look forward to ongoing Principal's Reports, and anything you want to hear about Algonquin, just go to the Principal's Report. Okay, moving right along, enrollments.
Enrollments are in your packet. This time of the year, we have quite a variety of presenting the information, not only what the enrollment is currently, but what our projected enrollments are. We're beginning to call the flipside of one of these, the Dan Kalender Report, actually. That's how we call it, so you're welcome. That's how we, what we, is the Dan Kalender Report in the packet? But it really is a nice, you know, overall snapshot of where we are now and then where we may be. One of the things that we did notice in some of the projections is that we're not tracking very closely to the census, so we are tracking closer to Nezdek, and so we've tried to incorporate that into some of our anticipated numbers, particularly when we start at the K level and carry that number through. They're always off, which then skews our end result numbers at the high school here, and that's, that's your reporting, so we've been trying to adjust that. But overall, good numbers, you know, increase of twenty from June, June's actuals, and an increase, again, over Nezdek's projections. We did check into, you know, Tim did a nice job of sort of doing some due diligence around where these kids were coming from, and there really isn't one specific source, folks are moving into the area, some students are returning from private school, so some kids are coming back from tech school. Particularly, I was concerned about the senior class, we had a jump of about seven, that's a lot for seniors, not so typical for freshmen, or atypical for the freshman class to increase that way, but, you know, when you have seven increase in the senior class, you kind of like to know where they're coming from, and it was all good. So, for the most part, it says people won't be here, and people want to return. And so, this is an important number, October 1 numbers. I did reflect the percentage allocation based on those October 1 numbers, which will become part of our budget conversation, as we know, particularly when we're calculating assessments to our two towns. So, again, slight shift. Right now, it's fifty-nine, fifty-nine percent, fifty-nine point fifty-nine, Northborough, and forty point forty-one, with a one point three-three percent swing. So, we don't know what that's going to look like, it's a little premature, we don't know what the minimum local contributions are, and what those rates are going to look like at budget season, but right now, those are the percentages, and those will be what stays as we move forward in the budget process.
Okay, okay. Okay, we have a lot of reports, so, in the interest of time, we have the final FY-17 End-of-Year General Fund Expenditure Report as of June 30th, 2017, we have the final FY-2017 Statement of Revenue Report, 2016-17, the FY-18 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of August 31st, 2017, and September 30th, 2017, and the FY-18 Statement of Revenue as of August 31st, 2017, and September 30th, 2017. So, I would request to just...
All until audited.
All until audited.
Safety in the vote.
All until audited.
We move those forward, it is approved until audited.
I would suggest that maybe we move them in a block, unless anybody has specific questions on any of them?
I'm in wild agreement. We'd move that we vote to approve all said reports until audited. Second?
Moved by Dan, seconded by Paul. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you very much, but we also have to revote the FY-18 assessments.
And so, this is where I get to introduce the person that you may not recognize seated next to Cheryl. As we all know, this is a, if I had a drum roll for Cheryl, this is probably the last time we're going, she's going to actually get to talk about revoting the assessments, because the governor's budget and the final budget were different than what we anticipated during budget session, so I would definitely not want to take that moment, this moment away from you, Cheryl, after thirty-something years of, and many years since 2005, moving this forward.
And this really, really has sort of become an annual event in the fall for us.
Yeah.
But if you remember back to last February, we, when we voted our assessments, we were using the, what was available to us at the time, which was the preliminary Chapter Seventy numbers, and at that point in time, it was $3,063,544. When all was said and done in July, when the governor's final budget came to be, our, the regional school district's final Chapter Seventy was actually $14,730 higher than that. So, as we do, we revote, while our budget stays the same, we revote our assessments so that the additional money is, the town's assessments are lowered by that amount. So, we do have a motion in your package that will sum this up and give us the necessary language that we need to work our way through this.
You would like to make the motion? Joan?
Read the whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move to approve the FY-2018 Budget Assessments as follows, gross operating budget of $22,304,466, operational budget assessments of $17,826,319, representing an operational assessment to Northborough of $10,406,325, representing an operational assessment to Southborough of $7,419,994, debt payments of $1,135,006, representing a debt assessment to Northborough of $660,547.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, thank you. Make that correction. Representing a debt assessment to Southborough of $474,432. Total assessment, operating in debt of $18,961,325, representing a total assessment to Northborough of $11,66,899, representing a total assessment to Southborough of $7,894,426.
Second?
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you very much.
And moving forward, Matt Wells, Director of Finance and Operations, he's been very busy since arriving in district about a month ago, we've just, he's been everywhere with us, and we're happy to have you in Central Office, working on all our behalf.
Welcome to you, too.
Welcome, Matt. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to budget priorities.
This is, it may look familiar, and it should, these are our FY-2018 budget priorities. As customary, I do ask the school committee to allow me that extra time to have a conversation with our administrative team. I hope next month will be that we bring our collective thoughts together to the committee. We've had some preliminary conversations, and at this point, they're very closely aligned to our goals, in terms of what we would like to see with the budget this year, but I do believe there'll be a few minor changes in emphasis, just as we've had in the past. So, I would like to ask the committee to allow us to continue that conversation, and I will bring some recommendations back to the committee for consideration next month.
Okay. FY-19 budget calendar?
It's growing. We have already had several meetings, we recently had a meeting with the Southborough Budget Committee and the Southborough Financial Team. We have a few capital planning meetings scheduled for region, and I would ask that, at this point, we have Paul Buck and Joan are both members of the Regional Capital Plan Subcommittee, Patty Press was formerly on that, she's no longer on the Regional School Committee, so if the committee wants to entertain another member for this committee, we do have a quorum with the two members that are standing, but it doesn't allow us a third. What we would do then is post, as we have been, that there's an opening, you know, that there's a meeting, and anyone is welcome to attend and serve on that committee in the absence of a third member or a quorum member. But if someone is interested in specifically serving on that subcommittee, we do need a third, or would like a third.
Why don't you just think about it? Okay. I'm sure, I'm sure people will think about it and get back to us.
And there's a doodle poll out, in case you're wondering, and you do want to check your calendars, we have a doodle poll out for a meeting either on November 7th or November 9th. And that might encourage some people to sign up, because they have a free night. Otherwise, we'll be sending this out to everyone, and this calendar will probably be three pages once we get to the budget process.
Okay, policy development and distribution.
They're all first reads.
Yay!
Yay, and there are two recommend to rescind. Policy Subcommittee has met, very productive evening, and we have a next meeting coming up in December. Kathy is, will the football dinner be served?
That's right.
I said I brought leftover for the foster party.
If you have it in November, I can do that. I could move it up, it's not a problem. So, we do have the first reads, they'll be coming back next month as well. Is any comments?
If there's any comments, let us know.
Let us know. And can we have a vote to recommend to rescind?
Sure.
On the E-120, use of Algonquin Regional High School tennis courts, and it's also a recommendation from the Policy Subcommittee to rescind smoking policy, non-students E-170, because it is included in other policies that we're working on. So, move?
Seconded.
All right, moved by Joan, seconded by Dan to rescind E-120 and E-170. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Audience sharing. We've had so much sharing tonight. I'm not sure that there's anything left to share. Okay, personnel.
This is a very lengthy report, it's a combination of last month's and this month's, and you can see, if you remember, Becky Pellegrino came to, I think, the combined meeting to talk about all of the exciting work that took place over the summer, and this is the outcome of that work, and this is the outcome of why we were able to make some of the changes that we were able to make and put those positions in place.
Communications, lots of distributions.
Distributions, and there's a twenty-pound MGL book over there, if anyone wants to lift some weights, otherwise it's available online. If a committee member does not want to have, take hard copy, we will recycle and provide it to our administrators, because they are costly, so we put them to good use.
Okay, approval of bills and payrolls, there always are, there's a stack, and agenda items for next month, report on standardized test results, and Health and Physical Education Department presentation. Any other? None, nothing else has come up?
All of the items we mentioned in tonight's meeting will be back on the agenda.
That being said?
We have a combined meeting next Wednesday, school calendar and solar feasibility, only two items, there will be no packet materials, because the school calendar info will be distributed that evening, and seven o'clock, the late combined, and solar feasibility will be brief, it's an update on the presentation that we had this weekend, Mr. Desmond attended, very exciting. And Joan Frank attended. Combined meeting is here.
Combined meeting is here, yes. And we need quorums from all four.
All four.
So, clear your calendars.
It's while I'm out of town.
Okay, good to know. Come back. Come on, it is, it is going to be the, the meeting of the year.
The meeting of the year.
The meeting of the year. All right, any other questions? Comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Dan?
Seconded by Raj.
Seconded by Raj. Any questions? All those in favor? Passes unanimously, we are adjourned.